We're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, September 25th, 2024, bill after six o'clock. And we're here in city council chambers at 345 High Street. We have one public here this evening involving justice grants funds. And do a roll call, please.
Mueller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We're just off and offering a prayer by council member Susan Vaughn, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Stand if you are able.
This evening, we would like to acknowledge the recent passing of some outstanding leaders in the city of Hamilton and offer our prayers to the families. Most recently, Mr. Bill Wilks passed away. Bill was a tireless community leader, businessman, entrepreneur, past member of numerous foundations, and was named Citizen of the Year. He also served eight years on Hamilton School Board. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Wilks family. Carla.
Another person I'm sad to say we lost is Steve Williams. Steve was just a great man, true to his word, principled in every way. He belonged to Roderick and a lot of other communities. Prior to him being sick, he was a constant fixture at River's Edge as a volunteer, and he will be sorely missed.
Please.
Lincoln Cave. He served our city on city council for a number of years. He also was former director of the Butler County Board of Elections. He was a proud Hamiltonian. He was, I love this community. He loved being a part of this community. And he was just a true community leader and advocate for our community and city.
If we could have a moment of silence, please, for our friends and leaders of Hamilton. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would be remiss if I didn't say a few words about a couple of gentlemen there. Been around here all my life. Lincoln Cave was a public servant, city and county both. That's rare. He was truly liked by all. He was a veteran. He really a friend of our city. And he stayed involved, talking to all of us, every one of us, until he passed away. I may have mentioned that he was active in his church, and that was a big, big part of his life, and he will be missed. And losing three people within a two-week period of time is really big. Bill Wilks, I think the man always smiled. I'd hate to negotiate against the guy because I think he'd be smiling and taking all my money, but no, he didn't do that. He actually had a lot of Irish in him, I bet. Always smiled, great sense of humor, nationally recognized football player, basketball player, nationally recognized businessman as well, and a real visionary. When you see German Village and where it started and where it is now, that was a lot of Bill Wilks. So we're gonna, we're gonna miss these people. We're gonna miss all three of them. And Steve Williams, also friendly guy, smiling, volunteer. So, I mean, we could probably all talk for hours on those guys, but I'd be remiss if I did not say a few words because they were friends of mine, friends of my father, and I will miss them. We'll definitely miss them. Okay, we have some special presentations this evening. And you want to lead us off with what's up first?
Yes, we have a presentation. It's the Hispanic Latino Heritage Month Celebration presented by the Department of Human Resources.
Bienvenidas. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and audience. This evening, we are celebrating Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Hispanic Latino Heritage is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th. Hispanic Latino Heritage Month is also recognized for the contributions, history, and achievements of Hispanic and Latino Americans. We have two individuals tonight that we'd like to recognize. One is a resident business owner, and one is a City of Hamilton police officer.
We would first like to call up Julio Garcia, business operator of Garcia's Supermarket and G23 Properties LLC. Also, by the way, all of the goodies, the tamales, the drinks, the snacks, were all provided by the Garcias. We thank them for that.
So Mr. Julio Garcia was born in Mexico, and he moved with his family to the United States when he was eight years old. Seventeen years ago, Julio's uncle founded Garcia's Supermarket on East Avenue here in Hamilton. Julio now manages and operates the store. In addition to running the supermarket, Julio and his family own and operate G23 Properties LLC, a property rental business. They purchase, renovate, and either sell or rent homes, contributing to the Hamilton community. The Garcias also support various local organizations, including sponsoring numerous sports teams each year. I asked Mr. Garcia, what are some of the challenges that you have faced and overcame as a person of Hispanic and Latino descent? Mr. Garcia states, one of the main challenges I have faced and overcame as a person of Hispanic and Latino descent is moving to a new country at the age of eight years old. The language barrier and adapting to a new culture was the biggest challenge for me. Over the years, I was able to overcome these challenges in hard work and dedication. I'm proud to say that I was able to become a first-generation college graduate with a bachelor's degree in business management and a minor in accounting.
Le preguntamos al señor Garcia, ¿cuáles son algunos de los desafíos que ha enfrentado y superado como una persona de descendencia hispano latina? Él respondió, uno de los principales desafíos que he enfrentado y superado fue mudarme a un nuevo país a la edad de ocho años. La barrera del idioma y adaptarme a una nueva cultura fue el mayor desafío. Con el tiempo pude superar estos desafíos con mucho esfuerzo y dedicación. Me enorgullece decir que pude convertirme en el primer graduado universitario de mi familia, obteniendo una licenciatura en administración de empresas y una especialización en contabilidad.
We celebrate you today as well as Latino community. And you've definitely got a work ethic, but you've also got a community ethic, because you work hard for your community, you're hard for yourself, and that's so important to have that ethic where you just keep thinking of new ideas of what to do, how to improve. And you've done that. Thank you for your investment in Hamilton. Thank you for all the resources that you bring. And I'm talking about money. I'm talking about your inner drive and the way you run your business and the fact that you're definitely a friend of Seventeen Strong and so many other organizations. But maybe we'd like to hear from you. What would you like to say?
No, I appreciate the city for this time and this pretty much sharing our story, just not myself, but our business. I feel like this could, anytime you give like a show, like a special spotlight to anyone, it could spark the interest of someone else or like even like a kid or something. At one point, I was one of those kids that didn't know what to do. And I think, I think it was like during middle school that I heard something along the lines of, I think money doesn't make happiness, but money makes things easier. And I think that was one of the things that changed pretty much my life because I knew I wanted to learn more about business and how money works and how the economy develops and everything along those lines. So that was the thing that sparked me to go to college and focus in business and accounting. So I think it could be pretty much a great opportunity for myself and for others as well to show these kinds of stories to everyone. So hopefully somewhere, one of those people who listen to me or anyone in here can learn from as well.
Do you have some family here right now?
Uh, yes.
Want them to come on up here because we can get a picture of your family up here with you. That'd be okay. While she walks up here, thank you for your leadership, especially for those who will be following you in this community. Because of what you've done for our entire city, City of Hamilton's Celebration of Hispanic Latino Heritage Certificate of Appreciation, Julio Garcia, in honor of your continued service to the City of Hamilton and community, we thank you. Presented September 2024, Senator myself as mayor, acknowledged by all of council, and signed by our city manager Craig Boukite. Thank you.
All righty, next up, we want to call up Officer Paola Leiva, City of Hamilton Police Officer. Officer Leiva's parents relocated from Mexico to the United States in 1997 to begin a new chapter in their lives. Born in Dayton, Ohio, Officer Leiva was inspired to pursue a career in law enforcement while in college, where she was introduced to the local police department recruitment efforts. Motivated by this experience, she embarked on her journey to become a police officer and was hired by the City of Hamilton Police Department in June 2021. She aspires to achieve her goal of becoming a detective in the future. I asked Officer Leiva, what do you think is important to celebrate Heritage Month, Hispanic Latino Heritage Month? Officer Leiva states, I think it is important to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month because we live in a multicultural society. And I believe it is important to educate people about our rich history and cultural heritage of Hispanics.
Le preguntamos al oficial Leiva, ¿por qué crees, por qué cree que es importante celebrar el mes de la herencia hispano latina? Ella respondió, creo que es importante celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana porque vivimos en una sociedad multicultural y considero que es fundamental educar a las personas sobre nuestra rica historia y herencia cultural cultural de los hispanos.
Sure.
Paola joined us. My name's Trent Shennott. I'm the Hamilton Police Chief. Paola's joined us in June of 2021, and she's been a wonderful addition to the department. She has a tremendous attitude, a wonderful work ethic, and she's truly making a difference in this community. As an agency, we often struggle with communication barriers, language issues, and she has stepped up on countless occasions, given her own time, whether it be a call in the street or an interview with detectives in a specialized position. And I thank her truly for that. Chief Boukite, former Chief Boukite, used to say that we recruit for diversity, we hire for character, and we train for excellence. And I truly have to say, she is the total package when it comes to that statement. So I give her all the credit in the world. As great of an officer as she is, I do have to say, though, that she's even more of an amazing person. So Paola, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Well, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity for, you know, allowing me to be here, recognizing me. I just want to thank my parents to start off. I mean, without them, I'd be nothing. They came here without anything to a new country, so I owe everything to them. I just hope to one day, you know, hopefully be, or hopefully inspire people to, you know, join law enforcement or do whatever they want to do, follow their dreams. There's not many Hispanic Latino female people in law enforcement, so hopefully, you know, we can continue to grow and just go up from here.
Do you have some family up here?
Yes, I do.
Let's have them come on up here. Hand off the camera to somebody. Come on. While they're walking up here, I also want to thank you for stepping up to join the City of Hamilton Police Department, stepping up to help the communication issues that are in every community right now. You've got goals. You want to be a detective, which is great. And, I mean, you are doing things for those who follow you, like I said about Mr. Garcia, and that is so important. You're doing things for those who follow you, who look up to you. So thank you very much for choosing Hamilton. Okay, I'm going to give you this. Why don't you introduce who we've got, because you've got a lot of people.
This is my mom, Judy, my dad, Omar, and this is my little sister, Emily. My boyfriend's out there, Luis.
You want them to come up here or is he the one taking pictures? Okay. City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton's Celebration of Hispanic Latino Heritage Certificate of Appreciation. Paola, is it Leiva?
Yes.
In honor of your, I usually call you officer. In honor of your continued service to the City of Hamilton and community, we thank you. Presented this September 2024, Senator myself as mayor, acknowledged by all of our council, and signed by our city manager Craig Boukite. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank all for being here.
So just a few other things. We want to make mention of our very first Hamilton Festival coming up this weekend. So can you tell more about that?
Yes. We want all of you guys to please join us on September 28th at Markham Park from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. There's going to be live music, really good food, trust me, and much more. And actually, we want to give a very special shout out to two community leaders that we actually highlighted last year that are here with us. Adriana Reyes, if you could please stand up, and Jose Contreras. These lovely, thank you. These two community members have been the two masterminds behind the Hispanic Festival and are also in the committee. And thank you so much for including me as well. So please come out and enjoy the Hispanic Festival on Saturday. It's going to be great. I expect to see you all there. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. This concludes our presentation. Thank you all for your attention.
Next, we have, I believe, the teens summer programming with the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and everyone in the crowd tonight. Thank you. We had a really new opportunity that we were really excited about, to collaborate, to serve teens utilizing all the great parks here in Hamilton to do that. And so tonight, we're here to share with you some of the awesome data and outcomes and folks who were involved with that. And so this was a collaboration between the Y, YMCA Greater Miami Valley, Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, and Hamilton Parks Conservancy, and City of Hamilton, and showing the great things that can happen when you decide to collaborate. And I wore my Seventeen Strong shirt on purpose because this is an example of when "we" is much greater than "me." There you go. So we first want to start off by thanking some folks that were involved in helping making this happen. Liz Hayden, this is a passion of hers, and also Adam Cornet with Hamilton Parks Conservancy, that really, when this data came back from Plan Hamilton, I could see there's a fire burning in both of them to figure out, how can we better serve tweens and teens in our local parks? We have all these great facilities. So through Plan Hamilton, that information came out, the desire to better utilize our parks and give tweens and teens those opportunities. And the locations identified for this project were LJ Smith Sims and Officer Bob Gentry Park. And our goal was just to engage tweens and teens in a variety of ways. And so you'll see, which I'll introduce Andrew in a second, is that the Y and the Boys and Girls Clubs went about that differently. And we achieved some great outcomes, taking on some different strategies.
Hi, my name's Andrew Flanagan, Executive Director at the Hamilton Central YMCA. And we operated the North End Summer Program. We were out at LJ Smith Park. We were there every Tuesday over the summer. Had about 15 people each session down the north end. You can see, we had people as young as six months come out with their parents, all the way up to 17 years old. But it was awesome to see just the different ages that came out each week and just something different to do other than spending time at the splash pad or ball fields. I'd like to talk about this picture. This was the very first week of the program. I remember getting out of my car, just hoping we'd have maybe five or six people show up, and there were almost 40 people there. A lot of good people in that picture, Stevie Allen, who's on the board, she's here tonight, Matt Markham on the board. They spent many hours assisting with this. Two neighborhood leaders, Krista Morgan and Sandy Combs were there almost every single week. Sarah Silva from the city and Maddie Watkins also came out quite a few times. What I really liked about the program, I've got a lot of respect for the north end. They had flyers almost every week of the different activities that they actually posted around town. They came up with several of the different opportunities that we had for them. And every week, they came out, they showed up. In the Y, you know, our motto is building relationships, strengthening communities. That's exactly what we were able to do here with this program. It's one of my favorite pictures of 2024, just because of how much support we were able to get. It was a great partnership with that neighborhood.
And our initiative was the Mobile Club Initiative, which saw the Mobile Club have seven weeks of programming, Wednesdays and Thursdays, at Sims and Officer Bob Gentry Park, and more of just teens and tweens that walk to the park that didn't necessarily come with families. And you saw the Y did an amazing job with engaging the entire family to serve teens. Ours were more those kids that might not come with their family, and so chose to come on their own. Of the youth that we served, 35 were 11 to 12, 35% were 11 to 12, and 65% 13 to 16 years old. And I absolutely love this picture because it shows, you know, just the variety of youth and teens that we had. One of the really cool things about this is that there were kids who were walking up to the park because they saw something happening, and then they joined the club. And they're now our club members and leaders that come to our teen center on Grand Boulevard. And so we used an approach where sometimes we get kids to do things, you have to have kids there, right? Nobody wants to be the first one. And so some days, we took some of our kids who were enrolled in our teen program out to the parks, and then we had kids walk up. And it was a really great, really great outcome. And we were excited, too, with it being the first time. This is the first time that we've done this, and we intend to continue to do this going forward in the summer here and partnering with Hamilton Parks Conservancy. But the big thing is that we showed some great outcomes and engagement with our families in different communities and different approaches. There's not one approach to fix our problem with teens and tweens engagement. That's one of the biggest takeaways, I think, that we both had. So it takes all of us to do that for teens and tweens. And this is what happens when you work together. So based on the number of teens that were in our parks, families, we calculated almost 1,500 hours that were spent between the three park locations this summer for families that might not have gone up there otherwise without the engaging programs that the Y offered and without the Uncrustables and snacks and other things that the Boys and Girls Clubs offered to the parks. So it was a really great partnership, and I'll give it to Andrew to wrap it up. And then if anyone has any questions, we would love that as well.
Yeah, just a few pictures from the program. One of the neat things as well, we collaborated Fourth of July. We did the Fourth of July tie dye. Boys and Girls Club came out on a bus, made it a field trip. And you can see there the tie dye shirts. Another thing, North End, they did for the Fourth of July parade. You know, we took some initiatives in the park and got to see some things outside the park. We finished the year at our board retreat and took the kids out to Campbell Guard, and they got to experience today at camp while we had our board retreat. Many, many pictures from the program. It was a lot of fun this summer, and we appreciate you guys for letting us come in tonight and speak to you all.
Do you have one other quick thing that I would be remiss if I didn't share? And Mayor Mueller was there that day, and I appreciate you coming out and being there that day. But the Ohio Department of Education actually came out to our program to see how it was going because reaching youth and utilizing city properties and Parks Conservancy properties to do that is not just a localized problem in Hamilton or in Butler County. That's a problem and a challenge that a lot of counties and a lot of cities are asking across the state. And so the Ohio Department of Education actually came out, loved our program model, and is intending to replicate that in other communities throughout the state. And so once again, it's Hamilton and Hamilton residents leading the way in a lot of ways for the rest of the state. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Hey Dana, go back to that first slide if you would, please. Introductory one. Got a question for you, Tommy. See the size of that grass up there?
Yeah.
Is that the size of like one of my divots when you, I, and Eric went golfing?
That picture was taken from the chorus. Yes, it was.
That's probably one of my divots. It was pretty bad. What a great partnership that identifies a need. I mean, the parks and the Y and Boys and Girls Club getting together to do something. That many hours, that's great.
And, you know, City Manager Boukite and I have talked a lot about how much investing in prevention yields to the community versus how much reaction yields to the community and how much more resources and dollars it takes if we don't get out in front of some of these issues in our community. And so there's almost 1,500 hours of prevention that happened this summer because of the support that we had from the Parks Conservancy and from the city.
Mr. Mayor, please. So over the years, students come to us, the teens and tweens come to us and talk to us at council every once in a while. What things do we have to do in the collaborations? The city, the state, Tommy, when you said they came down to understand further what you were putting together, the collaborations. So thank you for investing. Thank you for seeding and saying, we actually brought people because once others see others, they'll join in. And you proved that time and time again, like you said, with near 1,500 hours of great, great time for young adults to be able to be together and learn that there aren't differences, or there's a lot of commonalities. When they see each other and say hi, now they become friends. So thanks for doing that for us.
We had a great team of people, and Andrew and Mike, Mike Brammer, who's here, spent a lot of brain power and time to think through the best approach and the collaborative effort. And so, yeah, there's a lot of people that are really passionate about trying to figure it out. So thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Thank you. That takes care of the special presentations. We now go to the audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to speak may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when that item is up for vote on the council floor. Individuals who attend to address council are required to sign this blue public speaking book. Each individual is allowed up to five minutes. And we've got a few people who are here. First, we've got Greg Gerard. If I pronounced your name the correct way, please come up to the podium and give us your name and your address.
All right, I'm Greg Gerard. I live in 9143 Red Cedar in Westchester. All right, I'm Greg Gerard. I live in 9143 Red Cedar in Westchester. And I'm here on behalf of the Hawks. We're at the RC Flying Club located over in Joyce Park area. And with me are Larry and Kurt. And then I was surprised to see several other of our members also. Show, raise your hands, guys. Yeah, so we fly, we run the Hawks RC Club. And we're actually here to ask for your help. So we're going to tell you a little bit about it. We've been there since, in the 1970s, there's been a remote controlled flying club at Joyce Park. How do I change the line? Okay, next slide. Okay, this picture here shows kind of where we've been in the park over the years. On the top, that red was our first field. And then we moved over into that triangular section you see outlined in yellow. That, and when we got there, we paid to do a paved runway, build a paved runway, and we had a shelter and everything. And then Joe Nuxall Drive was extended for it to have two points of ingress and egress, you know, for the multitudes that came for the soccer tournaments. Made that flying site not appropriate for us. So the city paid to actually move us over to that area you see at the bottom of the screen that's outlined in blue or green, I can't tell. But, I mean, it was an investment on behalf of the city to move us over there. And they prepared the site, built the runway, and then we put in the shelter and we pay for the electric over there. And we have a port-alet for, you know, for convenience. And since then, and we operate this flying field under the auspices of the AMA, which is the Academy of Model Aeronautics. And through them, they provide some additional insurance for us in case there be any kind of an accident. Next slide, please. Okay. And then these are just some of the activities. You can see that, you know, we too have a lot of community involvement. I hear the word "community" and "investment" a lot tonight. So we, go ahead with the next one. And then again, some more of the activities. Okay, now here's where we are today. That's what the field looks like right now. Go to the next slide. But here's the problem. This is looking from the north, if you're in that, on that mound out there in the field. You can see all those depressions. Those are wells or some kind of burial site that has been, it was there long before the field was, our field was there. And when the city had originally graded and compacted all that, you didn't see all those holes. So, I mean, and they extend into the runway. Next slide, please. You can see these areas up here that are outlined in red, we've passed and repaired. We've done this three times now. It cost us about $10,000 to $11,000 each time, lasted about five years. We've done it three times. Go to the next slide. Okay, go ahead, next one. Okay, that was the way, that's the way it looked when it opened. That's the way it looked before the first one or just after the first repair job we did. Next slide. And this is more current. You can see these same areas. Go ahead. There's, that's the most recent repair work where, you know, we actually, we scrape it off and mill it and then do it right. I mean, they're good repairs, but they just don't last. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's what we'd like, what we'd like to talk about. Go ahead, one more. What we want to do, if the runway would have been built 15 yards further south, we wouldn't be here because we wouldn't be having this problem. But what we want to do is pave that area outlined in red. And if we can do that, we can abandon that part of the runway that's beginning with so much trouble. And there's no, there are no depressions in this area. So that's our goal. That's our ask. And that cost there is about $30,000. We've had quotes between 30 and 40. So moving forward, we'd like to propose a collaborative effort. Next slide. To extend the runway as we showed there. Go ahead. And, you know, if we can team up with the city, you guys got a lot of purchasing power that we don't have. You could help us with this. Next slide. And, you know, it would ensure the viability of the flying site for years to come. Keep going. Here's our contribution. We will pay for the materials, the paving materials and whatever else needs to be done. Go ahead, Dan. We have in our treasury $11,000. And we're willing to expend whatever of that we have to, to make this happen. And then if we can get the city to step up with your expertise just to make sure that we're on the right track here, number one. And number two, leverage your purchasing powers so that you can help us make our funds go as far as they will. And then provide the machinery and manpower needed through the parks or through the Public Works Department to actually do the work. And, yeah, I guess that's it. I've used my five minutes, so we'd like to know what the next step is too.
Told us a lot in a short period of time.
Well, thank you.
You folks have been good stewards of that part of Joyce Park. I mean, I've been out there myself to take a look and see what's going on. You've had regional events which have families, and you have families there probably every weekend when you folks are open. As far as, and thank you for providing options. I mean, that's a huge thing when you come up with what could be a solution. But City Manager, should this be referred to somebody, maybe they could talk to?
Absolutely. We'll have somebody, we'll get your information. We'll have somebody from infrastructure talk to you, just figure out what we can do to work together.
My contact information. We have some handouts here, Larry, would you?
I have, we do have some machines, but I'm not quite sure they could be used for that, but who knows?
I have this information. I can share it with them.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Lottman is next. Good evening.
Lottman, at 504 Franklin Street. Okay, I just want to say something about, okay, I sit here on these, I should say, parking in Hamilton is really going to be bad. And I know so much in downtown Hamilton, the side streets, like or Barney's Bar, one of the owners parks, says, "No parking in front of it all the time." You know, that's pretty bad. I mean, why do they get taken over for that?
I'm making a list. Is there anything else?
And, oh, yeah, also, she was, I think it was, um...
If there is, I mean, we'll write it down. We'll write it down.
Yeah, another thing was, um, I was, I can't think of what else.
Okay.
Okay. That's pretty bad. I mean, back, back when, back two, three years ago, they always, you know, shuck to places out like that, you know. It seemed like a place is doing none of this for these small things.
I mean, if, there are more parking spots in this town than what you think there are. I mean, sometimes you have to go down a side street to park, or you have to park on another street that's parallel to where you want to go. But there's a lot more parking spots in this city than any of us.
Well, I go by Barney's Bar.
And there, they are there. We make arrangements with certain businesses after 5 o'clock, which is very creative. And we use that. Your area that you just described, I'm not real, real familiar with it, but thanks for bringing to our attention what you think is to be a parking issue. But sometimes just drive a little bit further or make it a turn, you'll find a parking spot easier than if you just stay on the main street. Okay?
Okay, one thing about that too, when you're trying to make a turn with a parking in front of sides, you're hard to continue around the corner. That's why you're...
Well, you just have to park safely. But, okay, Jim?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. We have two individuals here from QuickTrip. Did you wish to speak at this point in time or before the item is before us? Charlie, up to you folks.
Jonathan Woker and Jonathan Haley. We just hear if there's questions on the consent agenda. Thank you.
All right, we'll see what develops at that point in time. Thank you for being here. Greg Erwin?
Wait.
Wait? Okay. Give me a second to write that down. Okay, Bob Harris?
He's out in the hallway.
You've got five minutes, Bob.
Five.
That laugh kind of, you think that you wanted 25 minutes.
Hey, I like that. That's how you want to love it. Good evening to council and to the audience, the citizens. Today is a special day, like always when I come to council. But today, I want to share with council and I want to thank you for the honorary street naming. My day started off going to get some papers notarized, left there and went to a funeral, paid my respects. And then I went to Maple Street for the ribbon cutting. And so I get there and they were taking pictures. So I walk up and, you know, somebody said, "Get in the pictures." So I go over and I get in the picture. And they take one picture and then somebody says, "Now you can get out." I said, "Well, I thought I was here for, you know, a program that was going on this morning." And they said, "No, you're in the wrong place." I said, "Well, this is the train depot." They said, "Well, you need to be down at the train depot." I said, "Oh, okay, so I just crashed your party." Meanwhile, the next person walked through the gate was Councilman Ryan. And I told him, I said, "I just crashed their party." They said, "I wasn't supposed to be here." He goes on his phone and he said, "This is the right address." And so I kind of laughed about it and said, I told the guys, "I crashed your party." But from there, it reminded me of Berkeley, California. I showed up there for a seminar I was supposed to be, you know, conducting. And I walked in and they said to me, he says, "Well, you are in the right place, but we're waiting on the Grand Master." I said, "Are you waiting on Grand Master Harris?" They said, "Yes." And they said, "Everybody's here, supposed to be here. Sir, you'll have to leave." And then he says, "I have to go in." He said, "If you're here, when I get back, we'll remove you." So the guy come back, I was still standing there. He turned around, he go back, he gets seven black belts. And he come back out and one guy said, "That's him! That's him! That's the world champion! That's him!" And the guy stopped, they froze. And the guy turned around, he said to the guys, he says, "I've never seen a black Grand Master." And I think about karate in that we're supposed to turn negatives into positives. And I've always used that approach. So then I leave there and I go to my studio where we're honoring Bob Harris. And that day, the mayor, the council people that came, 17 strong, the city workers that took off on that day, on their day off to come to that program, the people that came from Akron, the people that came from Columbus, the people that came from Cincinnati. And they said to me, "Bob, your city loves you. They were there for you. What we saw was nothing but love. They gave up their serenity to come and honor you." I think that speaks well of the city. The community came out. And I always do my homework. I asked everybody, "Well, who did you see here?" Because I didn't see everybody. I came up with over 100 people at my studio. And the city manager said he had 50 at the square. The city manager and Lauer burned all the food. I didn't mean it that way. When we talk about cooking food, we talk about burning food. But anyway, everybody stepped up. And I truly appreciate it. I think the community got a different look at council. And I think we ought to get out like that. You know, I thought about a lot of people that had their hands in what took place there. We had, you know, the renowned recording artist, John Heard, he was working with me. And we had preachers that, we had a couple that were Grand Masters in karate. I asked one of the 10-degree black belts to share with, you know, everybody there that his wife was the Dean of Cincinnati State. He was an adjunct professor. So you don't know who you're looking at. And you don't know what they know. And I take tidymen. Hey, you don't know that he's a judoka, but I do. So again, for Hamilton, I think it's a plus. Pardon?
I want to see that match. He's thinking of saying no right now. Daniel doesn't want to see that match. But wrap it up a little bit, Bob. First of all, the community owes you a lot. You're a leader. You've done so many positive things. You show up, you know?
Pat, the way I feel about it, I owe the city. I owe the community. And I want to make my city proud as I am proud of my city. So I don't come second to anyone. Anything that I do, I'm going to do my best. I'm going to evaluate it, reevaluate it. And whatever I need to change, that's what I'm willing to do. So again, I teach my students, make your parents proud. And I'm saying, I want to make my city proud. And I want the city people here to be proud of you guys that making the decisions for us. I don't have a problem with talking to you about, you know, anything. I can talk to anybody about anything. And I got an ABC program. That's a anybody can program. And I just want to say thank you. You did an excellent job and I'm proud of you. God bless you.
Thank you, Bob. Applause for Bob. Thank you. Okay, I believe that's all who signed the book.
Mayor, before we continue, there is one individual who didn't get a chance to sign the book. I believe she's the president, the Hickory Woods HOA.
Okay.
I think she may want to speak later on the meeting.
You want to wait for that item? Okay. Give me a second, I'll write that down. Okay, all right. Now we go to the consent agenda. And that's matters such as staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, informational reports, including our August 2024 financial report and investment report. We're going to go into the committee of the whole, which is a period of time when council may ask questions, provide direction, make comments on the various reports. Now, except the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, the committee of the whole will take place.
So moved second.
Motion Mayor Vice Mayor Pullman, second, I believe, by Councilmember Ryan, is that correct?
Yes.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hear none. The motion is carried at 6:50. So we go into the committee of the whole at 6:50. And you will lead us throughout the agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Our first presentation will be made by our director, our finest director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens. This is the fourth supplemental of 2024. And I know you just approved the third one at last meeting. But bullet point three, we've got some timeliness, so we need to get that one through. The first two items on the supplemental are the million dollar state capital budget money. That money has been received, is in our bank account. We've got a million dollars allocated to the Rivers Edge Roof, excuse me, project. And then a million dollars to Schuler Benninghoffen. And then, like I said, the third bullet point, we want to get that one done before the weather turns bad. We're going to tug point the south and west side of this building here. And it includes replacing the caulk in the control joints, seal up the windows, we'll pressure wash it. And after they're done pressure washing and cleaning it, they're going to seal it back to prevent dirt and grime from getting back into the stone. Next spring, we're going to try to do the north and east side. We're going to put that in the 2025 budget. So you guys got any questions on that?
Questions? Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave.
Next up for agenda item number two will be a presentation by our planning director, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening. So I'm here to address the Quick Trip at 1115 High Street. It's the former CVS location at the corner of High Street and Route 4 that we're all well aware of. So this item went before the planning commission recently. It was a conditional use request to allow for the fueling station and a convenience retail store on the property that's zone DT3. That is our downtown East High Street business district zoning. The conditional use included five variance requests to the Hamilton zoning ordinance. The planning commission approved the conditional use request, including all five variances, with the contingency that some additional follow-up happened with the engineering department regarding traffic circulation on the site and with our municipal arborist and also engineering-related to the landscape plan and easement that's on the property. The five variances, one of them was related to having the fueling canopy in front of the property as opposed to behind. Three of them related to the landscape plan, the most significant one being because of the easement that exists on the 129, the High Street side of the property. And the other two were pretty minor in terms of like the 10-foot landscape barrier and it being not quite able to meet those 10 feet in certain places. And then the fifth was related to transparency. And that was, they, Quick Trip worked very closely with staff on that one. And the variance request really was because of the layout of the interior store and based on storage and, you know, certain areas where it was not appropriate to have a transparent window. So those were the five variance requests. I'm going to just give a quick little additional detail in the two follow-up items that planning commission specifically requested. So there's been slight change to what was in front of planning commission at their request, again with insight from engineering. So additional follow-up meeting happened with the applicant, planning staff and our engineering staff to talk about traffic circulation and safety on the site. The planning commission's main concern was the entrance and exit that currently exists on Hancock Avenue that's closest to 129 and is, I know you all are familiar with, it's pretty close to 129. So with engineering's input, the solution that is recommended from engineering is that that become a right-in, right-out-only entrance and exit. And the next slide, related to the landscape plan. So again, additional follow-up happened with Dave Beadham and our arborist and engineering. In yellow, it's been hard to see on there, but in yellow, there is an existing easement there with underground utilities. And so that precludes the planting of trees and a lot of vegetation. And so that was, that's why there was the one in particular variance request. But the planning commission, because that is the High Street 129 side of the property obviously was pushing for additional trees and landscaping. And so we worked with Dave Beadham and Underground Utilities to figure out what's possible. There are two green dots on there that are small, but ultimately, two additional trees can be added to that High Street space that engineering is comfortable with because again, really only small shrubs should be planted over those underground utilities. So that is a summation of my report. Just as a reminder for council, if you're in agreement with planning commission's recommendation for approval, this is the end of the line for this one. But if you would like further discussion or have questions on this, this can proceed to a first and second reading at future meetings. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Lauren or the folks who came in from Quick Trip? Great, thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Next up for agenda items three and four will be a presentation by a member of our finance department, Ms. Tamika Hetrington.
Good evening. So I am briefly, hopefully, presenting on fiscal, fiscal year 2425, CDBG and HUD and home entitlement funds. These are funds that we bought before council back in March and we just received final approval from HUD on September 16. None of the projects changed from our presentation in the spring to HUD's approval. They all remain consistent. At the same time, we are also figured we, while we were here, we might as well ask for the amendment of some of our home ARP funds. Those were funds that were received in fiscal year '21 through '22. Those were additional home funds, so they're not our regular home entitlement funds. They were the Home American Rescue Plan funds. We have asked, we're changing not the use of those funds, but actually the organization that was originally proposed to do those funds. And those funds are anticipated to go towards the acquisition of new housing for new rental housing and that'll filter through Neighborhood Housing Services. Here is just a breakdown of the projects that were presented in the spring. And again, they were unchanging from when we sent them to HUD and presented them in the spring to when HUD approved them just a couple of weeks ago. A number of those projects are, so we have public services going to the YMCA, the YWCA. Oh, gosh, CASA. There are housing funds in there through the home program and then also public facility improvements. These are home funds, our entitlement home funds. And again, those projects were not changing. Those services will go to, we have funds going to Neighborhood Housing Services, but then also some match funds going to, or coming from South. And this is the amendment. And that just basically is breaking down the amended funds and their exact amount and that they will be going towards new rental housing. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
And lastly, for the remainder of our caucus agenda, for items five through 11, will be a presentation by our city manager, Mr. Craig Boukite.
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Mayor, council. Five through 10, these are employment agreements and new classifications that formalize the organizational changes that were necessary after the departure of the city manager and two executive directors earlier this year. To accommodate this reorganization, we cut the assistant to city manager position and added an executive director position. This was necessary to create growth opportunities for key staff members as well as prepare for future turnover at the administrative level within the organization. You'll find that there are five employment agreements, which correspond with all five members of our executive director staff. It was important that as we are crafting these new employment agreements, that we also refresh the existing employment agreements. And in order to create these positions, as we change some of the titles and job descriptions, the new classifications are necessary under Schedule A of Classification and Compensation Plan. Any questions?
Thank you.
Moving on to number 11. This is a, an agreement between the Hamilton Community Foundation, the Butler County Port Authority and the City of Hamilton. The purpose of it is to spur economic development and drive neighborhood revitalization. It's utilizing funds both from the Hamilton Community Foundation, the City of Hamilton, as well as community partners, including Kettering Health Network, First Financial Bank, Miami University and others as well. This agreement will allow us to work in partnership and utilize both the tools of the Butler County Port Authority and the interest of the City of Hamilton and its strategic priorities, again, as I said, to spur economic development and drive neighborhood revitalization. Thank you.
Questions? All right, I'll accept the motion. The committee of the whole will be closed.
So moved, second.
Motion by council member Nav, second by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:01. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved, second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Fear. All in favor, please. Oops, I'm sorry, roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7:0.
Adopted at 7:02. And I'll accept the motion from council.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
A motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, 7:02. We now go to the public hearing part of the agenda. Now, I accept the motion at the regular meeting, be recessed, and the following public hearing take place.
So moved, second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 7:02. City clerk, will you please read into the record the public hearing?
A public hearing regarding the use of federal justice assistance grant, JAG, funds proposed to be received by the City of Hamilton, Ohio Police Division.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the use of federal justice assistance grant funds? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the federal justice assistance grants? Nobody in the audience, nobody has signed the book. Anyone in council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:03. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved, second.
Motion by council member Nav, second by council member Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7:0.
We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. Accept the motion.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Nav. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:04. And we now go to pending legislation, agenda item number 13, second reading of an ordinance involving Valvoline.
An ordinance approving a preliminary and final PD plan development proposal and specific use request at 48 North Brookwood Avenue to allow Valvoline instant oil change use automotive repair on property zone BPD business plan development with one variance request to the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance. Brent Myers, C/ O, Casto applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Nav. Any discussion on this particular ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan?
I have no doubt this is going to be a good Valvoline project here in Brookwood. However, I do have some concerns moving forward with this property. I feel that we really need to start zeroing in on the future of this site moving forward. I'm just not happy with how this has been progressing. You know, the businesses in that area, the residents in that area, you know, we really need to start formulating a strategic plan or a vision to finish off the rest of the site. And, you know, just to be honest, it is a little frustrating to drive past the site day in and day out and just seeing the same, you know, vacant land and, you know, the trash, the weeds. And I just really hope that we can put our collective minds together and really put together a solid strategic vision for the Brookwood site. I think it's time that we really get serious about this. We are running out of land in this city and we need to start being very cognizant of every development that is going in our vacant land. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Actually, do you have a comment that kind of did what Councilman Ryan said? And I know this Valvoline and all the way up to the Gold Star Chili now is going to kind of develop that side of it. And I guess I'm asking, and maybe I should have asked you before, is, you know, that other part of that land that Mike was talking about is in limbo. And are we pressing as a city on the owner of this to move on this land? Or can I ask what the status of it is basically?
Like to report now on that or submit it to council at a later date?
I think comprehensively, I'd like to submit it at a later date. But what I can assure you is we are in communication and we are pressing them on an acceptable outcome of the total development of the site. But I understand the frustration is there and it's shared by staff, but I will prepare a more detailed response for council.
And these are two, these are two different owners of these properties though, correct? Each section of it, the part from where the new Gold Star Chili coming up to the corner is two different owners on that.
So I'll include that in a more comprehensive update, certainly.
I think most all of us are concerned, if not all of us are concerned about developing that area, the right way, especially the one that's nothing going on.
Right.
This is a front allot towards the street. And I think commission had a lot of questions about it. So, I mean, yeah, I think you expressed well the concern about the west side of Hamilton and making sure that it looks and becomes what it should become. Any other comments or discussion on this? Roll call vote.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7:0.
We go to agenda item number 14, which is second reading of an ordinance involving a portion of lot 26987 in Hamilton.
An ordinance dedicating a 242 square foot portion of lot 26987 as right-of-way located at Wayne Avenue and North B Street, situated in the first ward, south side, City of Hamilton, Ohio. Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Okay. Motion by council member Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments or questions about this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7:0.
Go to agenda item number 15, second reading of an ordinance involving a portion of lot 2520 here in Hamilton, Hamilton.
An ordinance dedicating a 10,070 square foot portion of lot 2520 as right-of-way located at Southeast Street and New London Road, situated in the first ward, south side, City of Hamilton, Ohio. Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7:0.
We now go to agenda item number 16, second reading of an ordinance involving the Chapter 758 Short Term Rental License Regulations. And we've got two people who I believe want to speak. And you want to read into the record?
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 758 Short Term Rentals pertaining to Short Term Rental License Regulations. Second reading.
Okay. You want to come up here and speak now? Now, yeah, if you're ready to come up and speak now. Or should we? It's okay to do it before the motion, is that correct? Does it make any difference?
That's what you want to do.
I thought it was just do it this way. Okay, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Greg Erwin, 451 Emerson Avenue, representing Highland Park and my family and future families, hopefully. Yeah, I want to address the short-term rental update. update. I was here about a month ago and talked about the Highland Park petition and the ban. And it was part of the three issues that were together and voted down. And I know some people aren't sure how many people are really for this in Highland Park. I've got the petitions here and I would invite you to look at these anytime you like. I'd like to read this if we have enough time, but I don't want to take too much time. But a lot of people, four hundred and forty-two.
Here's the situation. You've got the five minutes.
I got it.
But I want you to be aware, you know, this is.
Exactly.
Modifying the regulations. This is like adding or deleting things from the actual chapter itself on the regulations. This is not about bans or anything like that.
I understand. Well, I, the regulations, when I was here about a month ago, I was very concerned about Highland Park. And I was told the regulations, the new regulations are going to have some good things that will be what Highland Park is looking for, to keep, keep it residential. And I looked through, I looked through the updated regulations and I, I didn't see anything other than, there's some rules about Airbnbs, the, how many, how many can park there, the noise. And it went from five problems down to four, you know. So that's, that's been a big update. I, I think, you know, it's, it's okay. But what we were asking for, and I thought something was going to be in there, I, I didn't see anything. Obviously, there's nothing about bans in there. Park Township Michigan, Dallas, Texas, Tibby Island, Georgia, all have bans. And those aren't in there. I read through it and there's nothing about, what we're really concerned, and I've talked to some of you, is it's not about the problem now, it's five or 10 years from now. And that's our big concern. Other cities have put caps on them or limited the amount. Alamos, Colorado, five percent cap. Palm Springs, California, twenty percent cap. Frisco, twenty-five percent cap. Santa Rose, California, limiting one hundred and ninety-eight. Are there any caps or limitations in there that I missed? Because I was in, my reading group, I was in the crows, so I don't read too well. You guys didn't see anything? Caps, limitations, nothing like that? The third, and I said some of this to you, what other cities are doing, and maybe this is in there, I'm not really sure. I know that said some things about owner occupied. I think some of us have talked about owner occupied means obviously the owner lives there most of the year, or part, six months or more. Cities do it differently. And they have a vested interest in the, in the neighborhood. They're neighbors. And owner occupied, this is being done in New York City, Burlington, New York, Chattanooga ten C, Frisco, California, Red Hook, New York, and many other places. There's lots of things we can do to try to be ahead of the curve, even putting a cap. I've heard people say, that's not going to be a problem. I'm almost positive it won't. We'll put a cap on it, do something. But for council to ignore four hundred and forty-two residents doing nothing is really disturbing. They think it's not fair. I would like to ask on behalf of some residents, they wanted me to ask council members, Liz Hayden, city manager, before you vote, are you involved with any, you or your family involved with any short-term rental properties? That's important. I know the planning council, when they voted, it was four to one. David Davis and recused himself because he lives in Highland Park. So we have a request to know if you are involved directly or indirectly, your family, with any short-term rentals. That's one request. So did, is any of that in there? Capping, owner occupied, I think have a true Airbnb? Let's host them, enter the neighborhood. And I'm really happy to announce Highland Park is having a, a neighborhood party. And we're going to celebrate National Neighborhood Day, National Neighborhood Day. We're so happy. Hundred and fifth year. Pat Mohler came to the hundredth and we're hoping he's going to come back. And we welcome, especially the ones who voted for the ban, Pat Mohler, Mr. Knab, Mr. Lauer.
What's the date and time of that?
It will be on the twenty-eighth in Virginia Park from four to seven. You're all welcome to come. And if you didn't vote for it, we're going to want to talk to you probably a little bit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for not signing the book. We got here late. We were actually in Cincinnati and in a huge traffic jam. So thankfully, not that kind of jam exist at this level. It was a parking lot. Marilyn Tunat, number two, East Persimmon Drive, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-three Hickory Woods Homeowners Association. All of you received an email from me. I was pretty fed up at the time that I sent it. But I wanted to make clear what our problems are back in that private community. We have issues ongoing and the, the issue of the past weekend just really kind of peaked again when we had six young men in one house that appeared to me. I mean, I can't tell now what people's ages are now that I've reached a certain age, which you don't need to know. But they looked to me to be younger than my children, so they looked like children to me. There were six of them in one house, six vehicles, two in the garage, two in the parking lot, two in the street, one got a flat tire and pushed it in front of the next door neighbor's home into their grass and left it there. Repeated calls to the management, nothing occurred. I was having trouble with the three-one-one app. I found it very frustrating. I wanted to do the, the things that you had requested and in using that. I did have someone call me then on Monday. I think we did get that worked out. I haven't had a chance to, to look at it. It was either Monday or Tuesday. And I do appreciate that. I appreciate Mr. Knab reaching out to me and, and having a discussion. And I appreciate Liz's attention to this detail. Because my request was that we could, at the very minimum, put in some written language for the application at the time, if your law office couldn't agree to it, to banning it from our, our little area, for whatever reason, which it should be. But to put language in for the applicant to do their due diligence. And I was real pleased to read, while I was looking at my emails while sitting here, that you are intending to actually do that. I appreciate that. I hope that that's something that you can consider moving forward. Because there are a number of HOAs that are moving towards looking at this issue for themselves because they didn't necessarily have the required language within their seat, covenants, conditions, and regulations. Our overall goal is to work amicably with the city, with the council. We appreciate you listening to me repeatedly talk about this issue. But it's one that's very near and dear to me. I did talk to Senator Lang about it because it is an Ohio revised code issue and he's researching it as well to see if there's any further information that he could lend when it comes to further regulations you may want to adopt. Because I think that's a good starting point, is to look at how the state looks at those things. So in conclusion, I'm not going to go into what Liz or Lauren sent to me, other than to say that I'm pleased that you are considering putting that language into it. I thought that when you did these kinds of things, that you would put the changes up there for the public to read. But those, that doesn't seem to ever happen, when I've been noticing that. I think it's important for people that might have an interest in that, even watching television, to see what that is. So if you don't mind, I'm going to take a minute to read what was sent to me. That, that, it says, I have an update to the language emailed to you earlier. The language below is being shared with city council as well. To reiterate what Liz stated, we will add this language to our application to encourage people to complete their full due diligence before proceeding with a short-term rental. Planning department staff are not permitted to give legal advice or arbitrate private property disputes. We never wanted you to. It is the responsibility of the short-term rental license applicant to determine whether there are any applicable legal impediments to using a short-term rental license if issued by the city for a particular property, including any homeowners association rules or covenants, lease provisions, insurance, exclusions, or financing conditions, as city reviews applications solely for compliance with cities' ordinances and regulations in that regard. Thanks, Lauren. And I say thank you to all of you for that. That being said, that helps a little bit maybe with future lawsuits that move forward, if we would have to go that far again. We are still waiting for our final thing. But I hope that that will take care of some relicensing issues for the people that are out there at this time. It doesn't negate, though, that the police officers that first came out to address the car in the yard told my vice president that I can't do anything about that because you're private property. But when I called and, and had him call and talk to the dispatch, they said, well, let's reiterate that again. And then they did come out and they did help facilitate that car being towed. And for that, I am very grateful. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion at this time? You want to read it into the record? Is that correct? City clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted. Oh.
I tell you, I mean, normally I would say no, but since this one has raised some discussion, this time, okay. But it's got to be five minutes or less, okay? And your name and your address, please.
It's Amber Cron and I'm at thirty-six-ten Milliken Road in Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one. And this just concerns me because I actually have six short-term rentals, one of which is in Middletown, the other five are here in Hamilton. I am one of the three, which will soon be two, because the other one is selling theirs, that are one of the five bedrooms. And the other one, I also personally know her as well, and she is also very much a resident of Hamilton. My question, or my concern of all of that is, and question is, have there actually been problems and issues with five? I know parking is a problem. And trust me, I, before I even allow anybody to book, how many cars you bring in? Because I can't handle more than three. You got two spots and one in front of my house and that's it. And if they tell me that, and if the neighbors complain to me, I'm knocking on the door. My biggest ask is instead of trying to do some of these changes and make those say, hey, four instead of five and all of that, instead make it more, and some of yours I definitely agreed with. The person, the manager, needs to live in Cincinnati or Dayton. Yep, definitely. We need to be able to get there. We need to be able to address it. And as somebody that is here, I think that is honestly your biggest and your best avenue to achieving the ultimate goal, which is you want happiness with your neighbors. You don't want problems. You want everybody to be on the same page and glad that you have the short-term rental. And you want it to be kept up. You want people to come. I, I was asked to host the Agave and Rye people. I couldn't do it because there's more than four people that aren't related in my five-bedroom house that's right across the street and walking distance to them. And I'm like, I, honestly, I don't understand why. Like I said, they're like, nope, we're only bringing one car. There's five of us in the five bedrooms, but they're all not related. So I couldn't. And they were not here for a party. They were here for training. I'm, and if everybody had talked to me or asked me, or I said, every one of my neighbors has my phone number, whenever there's a problem, they're the first one to tell me. That's actually why I couldn't make the last meeting, was because I was dealing with an issue of people that were there for, they actually weren't even short-term. They were there for two months. So I couldn't be here because I was getting poop out of a bathtub. And I really, truly believe that your best interest and best foot forward is to focus more on your owners and where we reside, where we're at, and how it is that we handle the situations, as opposed to just putting in more regulations, addressing, oh, four cars, or three cars, or five bedrooms. Instead, put it on the people, not the actual houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got a motion by council member Fear. Was there a second?
Second.
Vice Member, council member Fear, second by council member Vaughn. A discussion amongst council. Anybody have anything they want to say? Mr. Mayor, council member Ryan?
Greg, I got to be honest with you. That's, those were some pretty hard comments for, for you to make tonight. Okay. And I'll, I'll go ahead and answer it. Okay. I don't have anything to do with Airbnbs. Number two, I am happy to see that Highland Park is, is having a community event. And I'm going to go. Because that's what this whole city is about, welcoming everybody, even with a difference of opinion. Okay. So just want you to know that, that upset me just a little bit. Okay. I just want to address.
We're not going to go back and forth on this, okay?
So I just wanted to address that. Okay, you asked, so I just being receptive. Okay. Number two, I'm, I'm glad we're finally moving this on. I like what's being proposed. I like to see that we have owner occupied. I fully support that. As I said before, if you own a home, you should be able to do as you wish, as long as you follow the law. I like that. However, I do have some concerns with the large and commercial short-term rentals, which is not owner occupied. I am going to be a little receptive to some of the, the neighborhoods that have raised some concerns about this. Okay, I, I hear you. I understand you. If it is the, the pleasure of this council, I would favor removing that from this legislation. If we can't come to a consensus of that, I would at least just negotiate, maybe we could put a, a cap on the number that are allowed to operate in any given neighborhood. But if, if we can't agree on that, I am going to vote in favor of this legislation because we definitely need to get something on the books and just see where this goes. So Liz and staff, thank you. I know it's been a long road. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
Along the lines of what Michael said, I agree with everything you said. My only suggestion was, would be, let's just leave it like it is right now and monitor it. I mean, that's what we plan on doing all along anyway. So let's say in six months to see if there's an issue. It's not to say we won't change, but this thing has gone under so much amendment and discussion, let's just move on with it is, is how I feel. But monitor it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
First of all, I want to thank Liz for her hard work of, you know, working on the rules and everything and working with everybody. I think you did a great job. Your whole department did a great job. It's been a tough battle. But I think we're, you know, gaining some ground there. To answer Greg, to answer your question, I've said it before, I don't own anything to do with Airbnb. And I told you that I had a neighbor that has one two doors down from me. I've never had any problem with them. And they've had a party over there, thirty people, you know, for graduation, no problems whatsoever. I even ask all my neighbors. I live over in Governor's Hill. I don't have any problem with them. And, you know, but again, I, I want to reiterate that I don't own anything like that. It's, I don't want to own anything like that. I leave it up to the people that are, that like that. And, you know, I appreciate you, you know, having, going by your rules and, you know, keeping everything straight over there. But, and I do feel like I'm invited, but I'm uninvited to your party. So that was kind of, you know, kind of a cut, I felt. You know, if you want us to not be there, just tell us, okay, that you, we, you don't want the people that voted against it, you know, not to be there. But like Michael said, we try to go to the community activities. That brings me back to the, one of the reasons why I think some people voted against it, because there was comments about you guys were strong, you don't need Seventeen Strong. And there was also comments about banning all the neighborhoods. That's not what we want in this city. We want Seventeen Strong is a great organization. We don't want separation. And that's what I, a few of us heard of here. And you can shake your head, but we can play it back. And you know, we've talked about this. This, this city is, you know, has worked so hard. And I, you know, one thing I'm proud of being a council member is Seventeen Strong. I mean, I, I was just floored when I got on council and saw what they do. And here we had a neighborhood, some comments from your neighborhood saying they don't need Seventeen Strong. Okay? And I think that changed some people's mind. But glad to work with you on anything. You can call me anytime. All right? I mean, you know that. And I'll be glad to talk to you anytime. But I think we made a lot of progress. And I think there's going to be more progress down the road. Okay? Little baby steps on this. The total ban I'm just not for and I never will be. Okay? Thanks.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I appreciate talking with everyone who joined us in Chambers, Maryland, your conversation, Greg. Greg, your conversation this afternoon with Doug, many other residents from Highland Park. I do believe that strongly that we need to continue to monitor, Liz, I appreciate all the work, Craig, from your office and your teamwork offices throughout the city in what we're attempting to do. Tonight's legislation, as I shared with all of you, does put an order to what we want to accomplish with Airbnbs. To the lady from Milliken Road in Fairfield Township, thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight. We appreciate your investment in Hamilton. What we cannot do as council is identify one, two, three, four, all the way up to 200 or 300 Airbnbs in the city of Hamilton and handle them individually. Hickory Woods has a problem. Marilyn was kind enough to send pictures, she was kind enough to share those problem properties with outside investors that have temporary people, six people not related living in one of their houses. It's incumbent on the city, I don't care if it's an HOA, property taxes, they're paying, we have city services out there, the police department went out there and said, no, we can't do anything, and they came back and finally fixed it. I believe our council has responsibility to all of our residents, to investors. I do own some investment property. None of them happen to be Airbnbs. Answer that question, Greg. None of them happen to be short-term rental properties. So importantly, we have a responsibility, as we were elected, to tend to all of our residents, to all of the small businesses, all the large businesses in the city. I'll still back up my comments from what I shared with council and the public back in May as we evolve through these steps. I'm glad, Liz, thank you for the steps we're in right now. I, when I spoke to all of you, I did say this is a work in progress, nothing is in granite. We can come back and continue to tend to the business of short-term rentals and properties. I did have a call from a lady on D Street who said she's tired of her neighbor having parties at 2 o'clock in the morning. That also happens to be an Airbnb. So we do have problem properties in the community that still need to be tended to, and if we have to do it one by one, I guess we'll do that for a little while. I would prefer not to come back and keep visiting this at every single council meeting in the future. So again, legislation that has some teeth in it, legislation that corrects the wrongs that we have right now, and that we can, we can move along as, as we promised this in a business format. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I want to thank everybody who emailed council, Marilyn and Dave Duracy. I also want to thank Frank Downey, because he sent something which caused me to think, again, about neighborhoods, plus all of you who spoke tonight. I mean, those are things that we needed to hear. These regulations are for health, safety, and neighborhood peace. The concept about owner occupied, concept about building up neighborhoods through smart rehabs, which could be LLCs, I mean, that's all, it's well worth discussing how, how we can handle those type of situations as well. This caused, what, you come into the podium, everybody, and sending the emails caused me to really look into this. I did check the litigation that's ongoing here involving, I told you I was going to look into it, so I read the decision. It also caused me to really think and appreciate the language that's administratively going to be given to people, because I don't think home builders, home buyers, I don't think the seller disclosure statements are often filled out exactly the way they should be, you know? And I think they should be. I don't know how we, unless we load up the auditor's office for the parcel descriptions, this is in a historic district, and do those type of things. So you rely a lot on seller disclosure in some of these situations. So, but I'm glad we've got that administrative language in there to cause a person interested in getting a license to look a little bit further. And I also thank the law department and the professionals here in this city for reviewing that and coming up with that. I think we need to monitor this involving the hotels that come into this town. I think that's going to cause us to maybe think about this a little bit more. But these are regulations that are health, safety, neighborhood peace. And I just, I don't think it got uninvited. I think he invited everybody at the end of his statement. So that's what I heard, Greg, so I apologize. I don't need anything else. I just said, I heard what, I heard what you said.
Yes, everybody's welcome if they're just, I'm sorry that you--
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything else they want to say about this before we vote on this? Okay. There's a first, and there's a second for agenda item number 16.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, we now go to new legislation, agenda item number 17, first reading of the ordinance involving supplementing Schedule A for job positions.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the codified ordinances of the C's classification and compensation plan, asset fourth, emergency ordinance number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, 2023, to reassign the pay ranges for the electric power systems superintendent and electric distribution superintendent, first reading.
Okay. Agenda item number 18, two readings of emergency ordinance involving a master lease with Bloomfield Shawn LLC.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a master lease agreement with Bloomfield Shawn Investments LLC for three parcels at the former Schuler-Bellinghafen facility in Hamilton, Ohio, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move the rules to be suspended and said ordinance to be run a second time by its title.
Second.
And councilmember Knapp, second by councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a master lease agreement with Bloomfield Shawn Investments LLC for three parcels at the former Schuler-Bellinghafen facility in Hamilton, Ohio, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
And councilmember Knapp, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion on this particular emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
We go to agenda item number 19, which is a resolution involving the 2024 Justice Assistance Grant.
A resolution approving and ratifying the application for funding from the Department of Justice for the 2024 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Butler County and the city of Middletown in authorizing the acceptance of said grant funds to be used for law enforcement purposes.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Fear, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 20, which is a resolution about a TID agreement and the Bell Avenue-Dixie Highway project.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Butler County Transportation Improvement District for the construction of the Bell Avenue, for construction of the Bell Avenue at Dixie Highway project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Okay. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by vice mayor Pullman. Comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 21, which is also a resolution that involves certifying tax levies to the auditor, other related matters.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies for this, for the tax year 2023, collected in 2024, and certifying them to the auditor of Butler County, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Ryan. Discussion, hearing none? Whoops. Any discussion? Now I hear none. I heard none before I asked. That is, that's bad manners, man. Bad character. There is no request for discussion, so roll call, though.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 22, which is a resolution about a loan application with the Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the 2025 fiscal year 26, project year 39, Grand Boulevard Water Main Replacement Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any necessary documents to receive said loan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I approve, I move that the resolution be adopted. Second.
And councilmember Knapp, second by vice mayor Pullman. Questions, comments? I just, I just want to again thank Public Works for asking for these loans and the grants that you get, because we're an old city with some older infrastructure, and just thank you for doing that. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, though.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Yeah, we go to agenda item number 23, resolution involving modifying the Maple Avenue-Norfolk-Southern Railroad Crossing.
A resolution for preliminary consent legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, relative to allowing ODOT to resurface State Route 127 located within the city of Hamilton Corporation limit, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a local public agency, LPA, agreement with ODOT to allow ODOT to modify the Maple Avenue Norfolk Southern Railroad Crossing within the city of Hamilton Corporation limit, ODOT PID number 115046.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Fear. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 24, resolution involving road improvements in Ohio Public Works Commission.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the 2025 fiscal year 26, project year 39, Hamilton Road Improvements Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mayor.
Vice mayor Pullman.
Make a motion, the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Comments, discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, audience of the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to correct the public record under Audience of Citizens to note that I didn't burn anything. In fact, all the, all the food was grilled to perfection, so. Additionally, tomorrow night is HBD Community Night, so the Hamilton Police Department will be out at Markham Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is in place of our traditional open house that normally takes place annually. Because we are moving to a new facility, we're locating at Markham Park this year, so hope everyone can come out, support Hamilton Police Department, enjoy some, celebrating our community together. So, last thing is, the 17 Days of Millville is continuing, so a collaborative effort between the city of Hamilton, 17 Strong, and the Chamber of Commerce. 17 Days is supporting Millville is a compilation of videos highlighting the small businesses that are open during construction in the Millville area, and that runs through the 29th through this Sunday. It's culminated with a social mixer at Nick and Norm's on October 1st from 5:30, 7:30. So again, please go out and support our local businesses in the Millville construction area, and hopefully everyone can make it to the social mixer on October 1st. Thank you.
Okay, audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
Thinking about the reorganization and everything you talked about in the caucus agenda, employment agreements, I'm just so thrilled that all this is working out, and where I'm not used to, where everybody is right now, I don't know who to call to ask what to do. Just thank you for your patience, thank you for the hard work that you've always given the city, everything that you've done, and I'm just thrilled that where we are now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
Carl, I would suggest that some of those nice people out there are very happy that we don't know where they are.
That could be.
Glad the phones aren't ringing, so. But Craig, to you and your team, and to reiterate what Carl just shared, what a compliment to the new organizational chart, to the team members that have come along with you and stepped into their, their new roles. I tried to contact each one individually to congratulate them, to thank them for all the work, and we talked about the 24/7, whether it's 11 o'clock at night or 5 o'clock in the morning, that all these nice people are working for the city and doing the stuff that they do to make us look real, real good. So thank you.
Anyone else? We, I can't say enough, we've got an incredible, great city team.
We do.
I mean, all-stars, and that's, I use that word a lot, but I got it, it's earned and it's deserved. Want to mention that Core Stan G M was a success on Saturday. This is the end of Suicide Awareness Month, but we're thinking about mental health issues like-- Anybody else have anything to say at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice mayor Pullman.
I forgot to mention that the Inspiration Studios golf outing was a very big success. I don't know what they made yet, but they were, they were sold out pretty good. It was a great day, they raised a lot of money, had a lot of, we had a lot of fun, a beautiful day. We had a surprise player with our team, which David Stark, which his golf club is taller than me. So it's, we figured that, it was always good to get a club length from him, though, I'll tell you what, because you got a lot of good lies on it.
We did.
We had, we had a good day with that, and that was, that's a great organization, again, that I love, and that I'm sure they made some good money, and they did some beautiful artwork that day. Then the next week, we played in with Tommy Johns, and we played at the, we did pretty good at the Inspiration Studios, we were, came in fourth. But friendly sons outing was, was a, was a good outing, too. The next week, we played with Tommy Johns, mayor, my brother and myself, and it's, we weren't very good, but it's, they raised some money. So it was, it was still a beautiful day, and boy--
It did.
I mean, it saved--
I knew that.
It was, well, Tommy Johns saved us, I mean, he saved us on stuff, but no excuses, but I took my son to the driver's range and drove like two large bucket of balls, and that's the stupidest thing to do before you go play golf. And it showed in my game, but we had fun.
We did.
Yeah, tore up a lot of turf. Cornet's going to be very busy. So, that was it. Good organization, so.
Anybody else? Okay, is there a request to go into executive session, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor, to consider the employment or compensation of a public employer official.
Okay. There's a request that we go into executive session for that stated purpose given by the city manager.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Go into executive session at 7:51. We'll come out of executive session just to reopen the meeting and then adjourn the regular meeting. That'll take you to the public business, and thank you all for being here.